For a partial contribution to some conceptual design services. And further as of a some kind of planning of the RMLD campus and surrounding areas. It's very important to the future of the town and to the and to the RMLD. So Greg, are we gonna go right to Andrew or how do we proceed?
I'll bring up the slides. Do you want to read the motion first? And then we can make the other have that be discussion.
Have all this be the discussion? Sure. Yeah. So you wanna go first Vivek on the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Here's the.
Yeah, what happened is like we actually passed a motion, but the language slightly different.
Yeah, we have to thank Phil for catching.
Read the motion and I'll explain what you.
Yeah, no, no, I realize what the change is, but yeah. So you're gonna read this. I'll read the motion. The suggested motion is move that the citizens advisory board on the recommendation of the general manager. Approve a fifty thousand dollar payment. From a preliminary investigation account. To the town of Reading specifically and for partial contribution. For conceptual design services to be eastern gateway project. That includes the RMLD twenty two two hundred and thirty Ash Street campus. Execution of an MOU between RMLD and the town of Reading is a prerequisite. For any payment to the town of Reading for this purpose.
Second time motion.
Sorry, so you second. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we need the business plan now. You do you wanna read the motion?
Yeah, let me just explain what we're changing. The original motion. You had that the fifty thousand is gonna come from the below the line payment. That's the return to town. So when we set the formula that the town gets paid. The argument was we need to set that formula so because the rest of that money. Was used for the reliability of the system.
It's capital projects.
Capital funds, capital funds, which reliably assist them. And so basically you take that fifty thousand, we're taking away that that money from the reliability system. This is also since I was around and I negotiated twenty agreement, this is also a big, big item with the town of Wilmington. Because at the time that the board sent money over to the town of Reading. The Wilmington, the folks in Wilmington got upset because they determined that. You know, they're paying into the system and that money was usually for the benefit of the town of Reading. And so therefore, you know, to take that money in kind of resets a bad precedent. It relieves some of those items. So that's why it's been changed from the below the line payment to from earlier investigation fund.
Great.
Is why.
Okay, great.
Above the lines, coming the regular expenses.
Thanks for the catch though. Do you wanna read the motion?
Yes, I've lived long enough here. Alright, so I'll move the board of commission of the recommendation of the general manager. And continuing the recommendation of the city advisory board. Approve fifty thousand, a fifty thousand dollar payment from a preliminary investigation account. To the town of Reading specifically for partial contributions for conceptual design services. Of of guy, a bee, that's a word.
Of the.
Of the. We got the word B B E here. Of the. Eastern Gateway Project that includes the RMLD two thirty Ash Street campus. Execution of a membrane standing between RMLD and the town of Reading is a prerequisite of any payment to the town of Reading for this purpose.
Any second? Great. Well, with that, we have some discussion and hand it to Andrew.
Yeah, so Andrew, do you?
Greg.
Go with the two of us. So Andrew, these are the slides you and I reviewed before. I can bring them up quickly. Maybe I'll just walk through them fast just to set the stage. And then Andrew, I'll let you kind of give an update in terms of where we are today. How's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Great. Alright, so if you guys know, the town of Reading and RMLD. Has been looking at for a couple of decades now, but the interest has been renewed in the past couple of years. To look at the two thirty, if I say two thirty, the whole Ash Street campus. So there's two thirty. It will see on a diagram here in the very last slide. But it's basically the three buildings that represent RMLD. So it's the building you're sitting in. Station one, which is one that you guys parked in front of. And then the building that's just north of that, which is the operation center, which is two eighteen. So we think about this as the two thirty Ash Street campus. Our ownership excludes the building behind us, which is the Barbis Building. Which owns the majority of the property behind property behind us and also excludes two other smaller properties. And I think, as I've mentioned to you guys in previous discussions, last year, we had a chance to meet with all three of those owners. And they're open to some sort of a transaction in the not too distant future. But the big, the big piece, and you can see on this diagram here, we're in the kind of the center lower area is our, is our. Two thirty Ash Street campus. On the north side of the northeast, so in the north, on the upper right hand corner, the northeast corner of that diagram. Is the market streets and the liquor junction and. You know, one general way. I'm sorry, Market Basket, forgive me, Market Basket. But the overall view is not only our campus, but also on the other side of the MBTA tracks. The town of Reading and RMLD both have an interest and we're open to doing something different with the property. The building two eight, two eight, three, two eighteen Ash Street. Is getting near a point where it needs, it's not near, it is near a point where it needs renovation or rebuild. So that's a problem for us. Station one, which is the one again, between the two buildings is a historic building. It ran as the primary generation station from eighteen ninety six until nineteen twenty four. It needs investment before reuse, but it is, it is a historic building. So that's a quick update in terms of where we are in terms of of strategy. I'll let in just a few minutes, I'll just give a quick highlight and then I'll let Andrew jump in here. But the town has secured a hundred thousand dollar grants. They've asked us to contribute fifty thousand dollars. So the total will be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'll let him talk a little bit more about. The process and the intention for those funds. I'll go to the very last slide. We, the previous town manager and Andrew and I had developed these milestones just to keep us on track. Time keeps moving on quickly, but our intention is to reconfigure what is our Ash Street campus by the end of the decade. Twenty thirty seems like a long time from now, but it really isn't the time in the context of construction. So we need to keep moving the ball forward now. Hence, the work that Andrew and Ben before him and RMLD are working on together. So that's big picture. Andrew, you wanna add? And I'll go back. You can see the slides, right? I can go to any one of those three slides, but. If you wanna talk a little bit more about where you guys are on the town side. And where we are on the MOU, et cetera, jump right in.
Yep. So good evening, everybody. I'm Andrew MacNeil, the community development director for the town of Reading. Just a little bit of history beforehand. So the town has been looking at the, what we call the industrial zone, which is the Walkers Brook Drive corridor and. Some adjacent areas for a number of years now. In two thousand nineteen, we received a grant to put some conceptual ideas out there on what we call the Eastern Gateway, which is really that. The RMLD area on the south side of the tracks there of that image. Of course, the pandemic happened, priorities kind of shifted from there for a number of years, but we're interested now in rebringing that back to the table. So we submitted another grant application. We were awarded a hundred thousand dollars to push these conceptual designs that much further. And those conceptual designs are looking at. Potential build out scenarios and what best uses could look like there of desired uses, whether that's commercial, housing, mixed use, or. Any combination of that across that area. But now we're also expanding towards that one general way, Market Basket area for. Potential conceptual ideas of what zoning and policy could look to promote there. So. Despite Market Basket being as utilized as it is in a wonderful benefit, I think many agree that it's just an underutilized area. And could use some sprucing up in terms of growth and connectivity. So. Really what we're looking at from a bird's eye view is not just zoning policy and desired uses and how our regulations could allow for them. But also the transportation connections of it. So. Right now, we are undergoing through a different grant, a total conceptual design of Walkers Brook Drive and what that may look like. To increase pedestrian. Safety as well as particular turning movement safety and also connections through general way, Pond Meadow and other to try to get to Ash Street. And of course, then the unanswered question from there, right, is Bolton Street, Ash Street, Main Street, Washington, and that area is the third leg. But that in a nutshell is really what we're looking to start pushing forward in this area and how we were able to tie RMLD into this is right. We're looking for ideas of what this area could look like. RMLD seems to be looking for what are our true needs? How can we start this process in terms of our future needs? Building wise, storage wise, truck, truck, parking wise and access wise. And so it's really a natural, good timing to start pairing the piece together. So the grant on our end is really to look at the transportation and zoning policy and conceptual ideas of. What buildings may look like in and around this area. And we're able to tie that with RMLD through this MOU so that you could get some conceptual of what an RMLD campus may or may not look like. And then again, does zoning policy and other need to start reflecting that based on needs that we find? So. It's a nice dovetail for a partnership in this effort to revitalize this area and improve connectivity to downtown and to Walkers Brook. I hope that is a good synopsis, but I'm happy to answer any questions here.
Thank you, Andrew. So. From the town of Reading side, this really helps with the MBTA mandate of, you know, building apartments and. Units of apartments so many miles from the train station. So I have to assume that's a big push on. Town Reading side.
That's a good question. I think it's gonna come down to the conversation of, you know, I think. Housing in this area to unlock development is a need, but I think when we look at the MBTA communities law, we have to look at the. The idea of is it too limiting in any capacity and whether that's affordable unit development or the idea that. We would have to allow multifamily only by right out of capacity rather than mixed using commercial separately. And we can incentivize those latter uses certainly through more allowances and lesser controls, but. Would we rather do that on our own merit rather than under the strict requirements of the law? So. It'll be an open conversation of is this area is right for MBTA communities or if it is not?
Hi, Andrew. Pam Baskelak is here. So just following on that, how do we think about the timeline? That was laid out here in connection with the timeline that the town's going through to determine what the the right solution options are. Are we? Are we conflicting at all? Are we getting ahead of that? Do you want to keep it separate? How are we thinking about that?
Um, in my opinion, trying to maintain a separation here is the ideal. Again, if we use it for MBTA communities, we can stop short at housing and just get that bylaw passed and then. What we find through this process, this grant process could be quickly subsequent thereafter for future town meetings. And that way we can look to kind of say housing and compliance, yes, but then true needs and desire very shortly after that. But this process is going to. Take us well beyond what is the MBTA community schedule. In terms of the schedule on the screen, I think it's pretty realistic to try, start moving forward again. In the policy sense and what we can allow through regulations based on the findings here. And then dependent on how our serious RMLD gets into pushing the next steps is really the question from there.
So I have a question for Greg. So Greg, here like we are allocating fifty thousand dollars for a project that includes, you know, the Reading piece. If we just had to do the design of. The campus for, you know, just to redesign the offices here or whatever you need to do, how much would it cost you?
That's a good question. I'm gonna say somewhere in the range of thirty to sixty thousand dollars.
I'd agree.
I just want to be sensitive to other towns.
I could tighten up that number.
Oh, yeah, I, I, you're typically five to ten percent in engineering on any project roughly, right? So if this, if this, yeah, if this.
So you would, you would be a pro in this, right?
No, when we, when we design anything, it's about a ten percent of our budget.
Oh, you're so concepts versus design, right? So the campus redesign will be roughly thirty million dollars roughly. And so if you, you know, to design is maybe three million, but I think right now we're just doing conceptual configure. So, okay. A million dollars. For conceptual, I mean, it's not, it's gonna be, it's more than fifty thousand.
I don't understand, you know, how that fifty K, you know. If you had included yourself, it would cost you fifty K.
Yeah. You know. It probably costs us more, I guess. So what I'm hearing, it will cost us more than fifty K. The, the challenge. So what we need to do as RMLD is look at two thirty of the properties in adjacent to us. And as Andrew mentioned, there's Pond View, which is right behind us. So we're, we are outgrowing the space we have and we need to figure out what to do with Station One. And so part of this goal might suggest that we go somewhere else in Reading. Now, there's not a lot of places to go in Reading. So right now is what can we do with the space? Well, the space we currently have, and if we acquire specific two thirty two. If we acquire two thirty two, then we'll acquire the small property in the far corner. And then the last piece is the property that abuts on view. That particular group would like to stay in this area, but they're more than happy to relocate somewhere in the campus. So there's a whole, at the end of the day, our focus is on that triangle. What to do with it?
And who owns two eighteen again at the town?
So we own, so we own two thirty, so there's two, we own two eighteen and we own two thirty.
It can just a garage, just a garage.
Now, the land underneath it is recorded as a town of Reading, but it's under the care and custody. So we have a financial interest in the.
As opposed to two thirty, which is different.
It's in RMLD's name out there, the land and the, and the building itself. For all intents and purposes, from a technical, I mean.
Yeah, so. So right there, you can see why we would wanna, there's a, there's a town. And RMLD kind of co-ownership on two eighteen, but. Two thirty is straight up RMLD. So there's some things to untangle there with the town to make sure we're all in.
Yeah, I know, going back to it too. I, I really think. This is more MBTA thing because you're changing, you don't, you have to rezone everything to meet their need. You don't have to build right away. So rezoning to multi-use opens up the possibility, but if there's no place for writing lights move, there's no place for. To meet the MBTA's requirements without getting that land for both, both purposes. So I think they're hand in hand. I don't think they. Run sep, they, they run separate, but they have to run consecutively as far as timelines because you've got to meet the MBTA's thing, but that's really a rezoning. Not a completion. So. Which is what I think Andrew had mentioned before, in terms of the timeline.
Andrew, just, just one note on that, I would ask for consideration on the, on the conceptual side. When, if, if there is a reconfiguration of an industrial zone and if, if the concept is MBTA communities housing development. That the height, whatever your conceptual is, the height becomes critical. Because it's a, it's an opportunity to go very high there, right? You could just see, because if you get close to the tracks, you could probably go. Whatever the town would allow, you could probably go six, seven, eight stories. The problem with the height of that is the view down noise. You, I, I would, whoever's doing the conceptual design, I would avoid a very high building.
As a residential.
As, as a residential.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a unique area in its relation, especially this side that we're looking at, the Ash Street side with the single family neighborhood. But yeah, dependent on the desired uses and scales, right? Can you parse down sub-districts and have one higher. Heights or density than others? And it's a unique area in terms of zoning allowances and what you can try to promote. Right now, it's. Only a small number of parcels, which you have to consider as well, right? If that parcel alone gets redeveloped. Or could it be subdivided into a more campus or courtyard or separate style of development? So. All under consideration for sure, but height will certainly be. A need of conversation on dimensional controls.
Right. Oh, great, please.
So a couple of things and. When we talk about multi-use, we're generally talking about retail, commercial and residential. If this being looked at as an industrial zone, that usually isn't quite compatible with residential use. You cannot. That easy to throw residential over a commercial.
Right.
Things. Trucks are bigger, you know, it's not an easy spot for families. So. I do see a split between the MBTA issues and this site. Where I see the. While I do think of it in terms of being compatible, I, I think of it slightly differently in the sense that. If we're going to develop the downtown area to be a residential commercial space attracted to nighttime activity and, and residents. Having a way to connect to Market Basket and the retail in that space. Is hampered by getting through this industrial area, getting over the railroad tracks and whatever. It only allows. Kind of that brief connection. Which is behind the Rite Aid, wherever that.
It's all, so there's the Pond View connection, which is, you can't really see it.
Right, that's, or, right. So, so thinking of this area. Not only as how to develop the industrial area, but how to develop the industrial area such that. It is compatible with the use that we want the downtown area to be, which is your residential commercial. So be, you know, what walkways, what bike ways, what pathways do we want to go through this area that is safe for, for. That sort of foot or bike traffic without impeding the.
Our abilities.
Right, the trucks and the industrial activity that would happen there. You know, for that reason, I very much support doing this with Andrew and his team. And hi, Andrew, another meeting. We've done a lot of climate committee work together. In order to allow that connection to be developed. So that's how I see the comparison more than meeting a zoning requirement for the MBTA thing.
Yeah, the talk of housing here, I only mentioned because of MBTA. It's really the lead question of do we want this to be more of an economy and commercial driver, right, and bring jobs to Reading? Or do we want to use it for housing? And that's kind of the first question that will likely start out, right, between our. Staff and the community and select board and you guys are like. That's, that's the beginning step of understanding what do we truly desire down here?
Yeah, to, to me, this, this whole effort allows us to leverage the expertise of Andrew and his team, which we, we otherwise might have, don't have in-house. Exactly. And it's, it's right there across the street and it's great. And we thank you, Andrew. We're looking forward to this. Bob, go and move the question. Do we want, is there anything more or do we, are we ready?
There's one quick question. Is, is the assumption for all of the concepts that RMLD will stay in this location?
There will likely be concepts if there, if RMLD does not stay and we have to just envision what a zoning and policy and certain allowances could be if it's not RMLD, right? Is that townhouse or a commercial or other? So to a degree, I think there will be concepts out there, just like that exists on two thousand nineteen of. If RMLD doesn't stay, what does it end up looking like?
Okay, thank you.
And on that note, the MOU specifically, so this is just on this project, this kind of this. Planning, conceptual, drawing type stuff. Anything, any sort of transaction associated with valuable land, it has to relocate somewhere else with a different agreement. And so that's, that's. Some of the, as the council made it matters to make the delineation very clear.
But otherwise, we're hopeful to establish the MOU and the RFP is releasing any day now. And that way we can start bringing a consultant on. By end of May, early summer and get this ball rolling. So the grant has certain fiscal timelines, constraints, schedules. That we just need to make sure we're on top of.
Timothy, I just had a question about two thirty two and the people and the vendors and owner there. Are they open to, there's very limited space to anybody to go anywhere. Where would they go?
So we're actually leasing a portion of that space already. And then the primary owner runs a trucking operation. And he is getting to a point where he's ready to close down his business.
That makes it easy.
And then there's some other smaller businesses built in there as well. And so to be honest, we really haven't. Talked to where they would go. There's some, there's five different businesses in there. But the private owner has a good relationship with RMLD and. We've had discussions in terms of some mechanism to. Buy the property out.
Yeah, pretty similar here. We haven't talked to them in a while on the town side, but when we engaged in two thousand nineteen, I think they all expressed pretty good interest in. Revitalization of the area in whatever capacity that might look like.
Great. Correct me if I'm wrong. Station one is like. The biggest issue on the site, right? What to do with Station One? Because the, that's two thirty two is basically. Commercial or it's pretty, pretty straight, pretty clean.
It's what is known as a Butler Building. It's a, it's a frame metal shell. Anyways, yeah, the, the key is. Station one is the critical piece because that's gotta remain, right? And there's investment that needs to be made to turn that into something. Two thirty is a well cared for building, doesn't, you know, work, doesn't really suit how we're trying to operate. Two eighteen is near the end of life and we're kind of outgrowing that. Two thirty two is probably the area of life, end of life as well. Then there's two small buildings. There's, there's a lot. Anyways, there's a nice big triangle here. The one piece that can't move under, I would say under almost any, the one that's really the. Cornerstone of the whole property is Station One, given its historic. History. I mean, it literally is. It's in the store registering. So that's the. Maybe we both don't know. Ready for one?
Hey, Greg. Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
And on the RMLD board side, all in favor? Motion passes five oh. Thanks very much, Andrew. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Andrew.
Alright, thank you, Greg, and I'm very much looking forward to this one and working with you all.
Likewise.
Have a good day.
Yeah, I know.
And the next agenda item is something, had some discussions with Greg and. There's so many ambitious things that are being proposed unprecedented in my, my ten years or eleven years now, you know, maybe even on. Three decades of the magnitude of power supply and storage things that perhaps without encumbering the department. There could be value in having a committee that could help, you know, do the, do the close in look and then make the recommendation back to the full board, which is something. We have had in the past in terms of a power rate committee and other committees. So I'm proposing. That we create. A committee called Strategic Power Supply and Load Management Committee. And that we appoint two members of our board and one from the cab to, to sit on that board and then they would organize themselves. And I propose that our, our board appoint Bob and Pam. Who, who have long experience in relevant disciplines, obviously Bob. In his utility background, Pam with procurement and supply chain. A lot of, a lot of great experience. We all bring something, but I have to pick two or otherwise you have a quorum. And then it would be up to the cab to choose, to choose their own number. So that, that, if somebody's open to reading that motion, we can then second it and discuss.
I actually oppose the appointment of this committee because I feel it would slow down the whole process of the department. Quite frankly, I really don't see the need for this committee. I just think it's gonna slow everything down. Department needs to move fast. You gotta have a meeting, you gotta get the people together, you know, so I, I, and I posed it in the last meeting.
You, you expressed concern and I appreciate that. You bring a lot of experience, you know, we'll, we'll see. I think we have some very talented people and if. We'd like to move quickly, we'd like to get some meetings on the books and, and move quickly on these things and, and not be necessarily. Have to have meetings like this with ten people to, to review all these things. So if somebody's willing to read the motion, then we can, we can take.
So if somebody's willing to read the motion, um, then we can, we can take a vote on it.
It's the cap's motion.
I think the first one is our motion to, to establish it and then the cab would appoint their member. Am I allowed to read the motion or no?
No, somebody.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I can read the motion. Alright, uh, move the, um. Which one?
Down the bottom.
I want to commence this suggestion, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners establish the RMLD Strategic Power Supply and Load Management Committee. And appoint Robert Coulter, Pam, Daskalakis and one cab member as appointed by the Citizens Advisory Board.
Well, I, I've sort of given the outline to it, if you want to address it, Greg, or any, any questions from our board. Right?
Well, um. Country, in, in opposition to the position from our, our board member here, Phil. There's a lot going on.
Yes.
To do this. And if not this committee, it would mean the whole. Uh, board would have to meet more times than it does.
That would be the.
We can't, we can't do this with one meeting a month. Greg's got too much to do, too fast. Uh, and it, and the issues that we have to address are too broad. Uh, it's not just pick a station, where do you put it and we're done? Pick a station, where do you do it? How does that station bring value? How do we tie it in? How do we leverage other load management practices and community incentives into the thing such that. It's not just the power we generate, but it's also the savings we get and the reductions that we get. There's really a lot that has to be discussed. And that, how pointing people who will make the time to have frequent meetings in it. It's, it's not going to be just one more meeting a month, it could be several. I, I think will help Greg frame the questions and present it to us in a way. That, that can advance things more quickly than if we tried to get up to speed each month on a critical issue. Because anything we don't understand or need feedback is another one. So I think it will, it's, it's speed up the system, not slower. And I think it'll allow us to explore energy efficiency, uh, as well as power generation. And I, I endorse the two candidates that are put forward. I think they have the right pair of skills to, to kind of do it. Um, I, if, if, if Greg thinks that having a couple of board members on to help promote the project is, is helpful to him, then. And absolutely, I'm, I'm, uh, for the, for the creation of the committee and appointment of these members.
And I know, I just want to add quickly and thank you, Ray, for that, is you're absolutely right. If we weren't doing this, we would definitely have to double up on our meetings easily. Because the magnitude is just way beyond anything we've, we've looked at in a couple of decades. So that's, I just wanted to echo that, so who, who wanted to go next?
Uh, just one question, um, I always said one cab member, I'm open to.
Okay.
Two, it, it's up, it's up to you guys, uh, I, I, we could amend it, I, I.
I went with it out of, frankly, out of precedent from the, um. Um, from the general manager search where it was two of us and, and one cab. We, if we do four, then it's, then usually you have odd numbers.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the thinking is then you'd have to have two or then we have three of us, then we have four. So it's, it is no disrespect to, uh, my colleagues, uh, from on the cab. But we do want to have the cab represented and anybody can come to these meetings. And if, if a third, if a third RMLD board member comes, it obviously has to be called, it's a public meeting just in case, well, it just has to be. And then it's, any, any of you can come too. Um, and if, but two come, then you'd have to call it as a public cab meeting, so. No, I'm saying if two additional, meaning if one additional of us came, it would be fun or two additional of you guys came, so.
I, I don't see the requirement for it being a member. You're not really making a decision.
True.
You're viewing issues and you're presenting that information back to our respective committees. Having, having two perspectives coming back to the cab, I think would be more robust than simply having one perspective, so. You're not, you're not voting to approve or accept, you're, you're processing and recommending and then.
Okay, well, okay, I had a lot of that, okay. The difference with the GM search committee was we were like voting of candidates to bring in or fit cats to bring forward to the commission. So we had voting, uh, and so you probably wanted an odd person because you're making recommendations, but. This is more for informational purposes than to speed up decision-making, but. I actually did think of it as that there would, uh.
Maybe some.
There would be votes, I mean, there, there was a power rate committee and they would vote and recommend up to the full board.
Think you'd vote to make a recommendation to the board?
Right, that's the, they recommend something and that is done by a vote of the committee. So that was.
Some committee would bring it back to the boards.
Correct.
For a final vote.
That's right.
I guess the worst scheme you could say it was a split vote, right?
Yeah.
Like boxing, split, that's it, pretty common.
Is it the sense of everybody that you'd like to have two cab members, is that what everybody feels?
So you guys, right?
We have some extra work.
Good guy, Timothy, you're up.
I'd be willing to, to assist in the effort.
And I just, just my last thing is, it's going to have to come back to the board anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why I see it being slowed down, because we as a board are just going to have to get up to speed. And you're going to know something in that committee and you're going to get me up to date and learn it all over again.
Yeah.
So that's why I think it's just going to slow the process down and that it's an unnecessary commit.
Okay.
And that's, that's all the same.
Yeah. Part of this, I think part of our commitment, there is going to be some homework now. I, I, I think it's not just, where does we go? I think we're, we're going to have homework, you're going to have to absorb things and I think, you know, when you have questions. We, we could bring them, but I, I, I think that that's, there's going to be a lot of conceptual stuff or a lot of information and we're going to have to absorb. Hope, you know, there's a lot.
So, yeah, and I mean, the way I thought of it and I did speak to Vivek, is thinking of Vivek, but as a member, and if you guys would like to appoint a second, then by all means.
I guess I'll sign, I change my term of view on the second, I think I would recommend a second.
You would?
Only because the board commissioners are going to have to represent as they live in writing. If Vivek's our.
True.
Recommendation.
That's true.
Writing, we have no representation of any else.
There you go, okay.
So I feel, actually, I'm actually, I would actually change by inference to, I would like to have a second.
Then let's do it, uh, unless, consider it a friendly, uh.
No, no, it sounds really good and I think, yeah.
Friendly amendment to the.
I suggest Ken because he actually has experience with.
Okay.
With the bloom systems.
Oh, okay. There you go, okay. So then, uh, a couple more questions, sorry, or other one.
Please, please.
Is the primary responsibility of this committee, is it around the carbon capture stuff or is it going to be more than just that?
Yeah, no, I, I was very careful, like when I told Dave, I said, I'm very careful about the scope and timing and Phil, my, my concern is timing. Okay, and scope, alright? So I said the scope a, a, and also the work and how much work this means for all of them. So, so I think we have to be respectful for, so one of the things we really need to do is understand. What are the constraints around tax benefits and all that, right? So that's something that we need to understand and then work the committee into the board process. So, so, so a little bit more work being built to figure out what is the schedule for overall project, board process, committee. And but the scope should be, that scope should be tight.
So, so I think the, the title of the committee is the Strategic Power Supply, which I, and Load Management. So I think that the concept is around certainly what's in front of us right now is this, the carbon capture, loom, et cetera, solution as a key. Piece of our solutions or supply solutions. I think the load management side of things is also important for us to, to think about and explore further. Um, so I think you're right, you don't want to, we're not trying to boil the whole ocean here. Um, but we should think about both those, both solutions to support the capacity growth that we're trying to achieve while meeting the requirements of the, um. The recent laws, but also how do we manage demand within our territory, so.
I think the strategic piece talks about being strategic so that this is not regular business for RMLD and the GM.
Right.
So it has to be very focused on a very narrow thing, it's the big expenses. But also the fact that to be sensitive to point that Ray, David pointed in the past is about, you know. You see load going up, but what can we do to reduce the load through non-productive, like, you know? I did, that didn't sound right, but.
Yeah, no, and, and it's, it's, it's useful to say this tonight, I went back and.
Increase efficiency to reduce load.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Or, or, or reduce demand, basically.
Mitigate how much, how much new generation you need to bring in. Um, can I, can I, can I just reread what I said at the last meeting of like how this was framed? That it would review and recommend to the full board in territory generation and storage solutions while understanding all options and risks, which could be operational cost, feedstock supply, i.e. gas supply, environmental. And then the second part would be review and recommend best-in-class demand-side management and efficiency measures to limit the need for new facilities. Uh, cost-effectively and make recommendations to the full board on, uh, perhaps a procurement design along these things. First of all, on those items, also procurement design and any necessary local or state, uh, policy, uh, that would help. That was what I said last. Two things. Yeah. The RMLD staff is fully supportive of load management.
Yep.
And we are actively working on that. That is not a short-term decision, that's an ongoing process, that is what I call regular business.
Yep.
Um, we present regularly to that and we will continue to do that. The, the challenge here, and I think what you guys are reacting and, and to the extent that we can reduce, there's two factors when you think about load. There's load in terms of mega watt hours, hours, and then there's demand, which is mega watts. And both of those contribute to the cost structure of the network that we need to build, including generation, storage, et cetera. My suggestion and recommendation is that we focus on the general, the big ticket item here is, is the generation. The master strategic decision is generation. Whether the load is two X, one point, one point seven, one point nine, whatever it is, um, we still need to add generation. So I, I, you know, we are very supportive of efficiency, but to, it would be, it is not. Realistic to think that we can drop efficiency, we can improve efficiency to extent that we don't need any additional assets and.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, nobody thinks that.
I, but I, so, you know, we can, we can leave load management in there, but we are, so. The clock is ticking.
Yep.
Relative to, because there are some things that we, we've gotten deeper and deeper into this, um. The ITC associated with fuel cells expires at the end of twenty twenty-four. There's a chance that it might be extended, uh, but there's a lot of reasons, so, so there's a lot of trade-offs. And again, if this was easy and simple, we would have decided this back in January. All I'm suggesting is that I would keep it focused very much on strategic power. You can leave load management and you can make a committee and all that kind of stuff. It's what we normally do anyways, I don't, that is, and we can talk about it. And we, you know, we can talk a little, a little bit more, but that's a, that, that moves the needle ten percent. I don't want the load management to prevent us from making a timely decision, whether we decide to do it or not on in-territory generation. Makes sense? It, it does make sense to me.
And, and, and I think we really want to be sensitive to the ITC, we really want to be sensitive to the ITC.
Well, there's a whole bunch of factors, but that's one, that's, you know, it's a forty million dollar.
So, so it's not to, to further prolong this meeting so that we can get on with the actual work. Do we want to now vote on the, the motion on the floor?
Well, I think before we do that, we determine, we've had two people say they want to step up.
Right, hang on.
Identify one or two people.
Right, hang on, first, this is a vote just to create the committee with our two people, then it would go to Vivek to run your vote on your two people. That's, that's the sequence, and yes, I think we've agreed already, friendly amendment to the motion is now six point two cab members. Guess that's going to be voted, so now we vote on our motion, so. All in favor? Okay, four and all against? We have four in favor and one opposed. Vivek will go.
Well, I think, I, my only question here is, um, I don't know if Jason has any interest at all. But, um, we've assumed right now, um, it's you and Ken. And Jason brings a lot of knowledge as well in the field. He did bring up a good point that that puts three people from writing on it. I, I don't think it really matters in the big picture, well, I have a lot of respect for Vivek's ability. And, um, he provided a lot of tech, technical advice and opinions to this, to our board, so I think he's a great candidate. But I never thought about the three writing, but I don't know if Jason has any interest, um, or has time for it. That's the other.
I sit on seven boards.
I am definitely interested, but I do not have the time.
That's, alright, so that's, and, um, I don't know if Tim would have any interest in it, but being new to the board, I, I don't know how much.
I, I don't think I'm qualified just yet to sit on something like this.
So my, my, who failing would be the two of you?
No, I, I, I really appreciate the process, I mean, last time also you, you. Actually brought it to the, uh, discussion here, I think that was really good form and I think it's really made the process better.
Yes, it has actually, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, so Jason, do you have any comments?
No, I just like, um, I know I mentioned all three, but I think I do fully respect Vivek as you on this side. Fully support you on this committee, I just wanted to make sure that we're sensitive to the communities and if we could not afford to do that and make it easier, we should. So I just wanted.
I, I think we, we are much better.
Yeah, I think Ken brings a, a level of expertise as well, so I think that's a great addition, yes, and another representation of another town, so. I'd be willing to read the motion.
Yeah.
So, um, both of the Citizens Advisory Board appoint. Um, Vivek Soren, you know, and Ken Walter, uh, to serve on the RMLD Strategic Power of Supply and Load Management Committees.
Thanks very much. Thank you, everybody.
One other quick thing, um, just to Phil's point, I know you voted against Phil. I have a lot of respect, you have a lot of experience you bring and you always bring something, um, from history that really helps us understand what we're doing. So I do have a lot of respect for your opinion and I, it did make me think for a minute because, um, in the nine years or whatever I've been on the board. You've always stepped up and had some great insight on things we may not have looked at and thank you for that thought.
Thank you very much.
I, I, I agree with that, actually.
Thank you very much.
We can go too far in one direction and too far in the other.
I agree, and I also would say that I guess if, um, over time we find that it is hindering, I guess, so we could always vote or we can.
Exactly, that's what I was just going to say in terms of. Of how this committee needs to work is to allow us to go faster.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
This is going to be, uh, scheduled for this week.
Well, that's a good point.
Do we want to do this all together, the four of us? Okay.
Yeah, do it after, yeah.
So you still have to do the rest of the meeting right now, yeah.
We have one item before item six.
Yeah, you got, you got.
Okay. Okay, uh, we have one motion on, uh, Greg's traveling to the, uh, APPA conference, I'm sure I can read the motion.
Yeah, move the RMLD Board of Commissioners, approve Greg Phipps travel to and attendance at the two thousand twenty-four. American Public Power Association, APPA, national conference should take place on June seventh through twelfth, two thousand twenty-four in San Diego, California.
Thank you, buddy. Move the question.
Can I ask a question about that, but I know that there is August.
Definitely is in August.
Okay, do we know what those dates are yet?
Uh, it's the twenty-third, twenty-seventh, twenty, it's the last, last.
Okay, okay.
That's when schools are going back and can't wait. I think, um, I don't think we have anything to discuss about the schedule, um, so. I guess we can move to executives.
Yeah, move to the RMLD Board of Commissioners going executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section forty-seven D. Exempt from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive or other proprietary information. Provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells for the approval and release of executive session minutes and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, hand count. Ms. Masino, are you?
Guess, guess you have to say your name.
Say your name.
I'm Dastrom, goodbye.
Yeah. The role calls on.
Yes, Raven Porter.
Tell it, I. Okay, move to carries, we are now.
Um, move that the RMLD Assistant Advisory Board going to a plebual session pursuant to Mass Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section forty-seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive or other proprietary. Information provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells for the approval and release of executive session minutes and return to regular session for a sole. Information provided relative to carbon capture fuel cells for the approval and release of executive session minutes and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Out that will is required.
Say your name and I.
Oh, Kim Woods.
Hi.
Ken Walter, I.
Jason Small, I.
Dennis Kelly, I.